Mr. Kowalski?
Here.
This is Dr. Cusack.
Here. I just wanted to announce that Borough Council just concluded an executive session to discuss a legal matter. Are there any, well, one modification to the agenda motions. The last motion for compensation to Jim Brayer for court time should be amended to, say, twenty-five dollars per court appearance. At this time, are there any public comments on any agenda motions?
Yes. Oh, okay. Let's hear it. On the bills, we got a partial last week. We could have Thursday, but there's seventy thousand dollars more added to bills last Thursday. Can we get the bills like the week before the meeting with a cut-off date? Because we're talking about this double bill amount we got last week.
Are those all additional bills that we received during the week?
They're bills that she received.
Since the last report.
And she's constantly delaying them. So the only time we get is sometimes we get when we get a bill and it'd be certain amount of time that do if we put a cut-off.
We're gonna get a late charge.
If we get hit with a late charge.
And if we delayed from that meeting, it'd probably be another six weeks before that bill would be paid.
But maybe you could do it Friday, the week before, if that's more reasonable.
Does that sound reasonable, Friday?
Friday before.
Okay. Could you ask Kathy to submit the bills on Friday, just?
If you pass, the council chooses to do so, I'll tell Kathy that we will cut off any bills passed Friday. And that Friday, when I send a weekly report updating, I will sign the bills to everybody.
And you know what, just if something comes in that Monday or Tuesday that's very urgent or time sensitive, we can make a separate motion on that and notify everyone, okay? Other words, all right, thank you. No other comments on the agenda motion?
I don't think there's any other ones reporting here. I'm gonna see it.
Stanley, could you ask him to submit?
I just noticed that I think we missed the last one, too, right?
Yes. Could you ask him to make sure?
Tell him to read.
Okay. So we'll eliminate that, the motions that people might have to report to accept. Okay, may I have the first motion, please?
Madam President, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of the previous meetings and reports from zoning officer, revenue reports, police report, housing inspector, fire department, and tax collector. Sir.
Questions on the motion?
I have a question.
Yes, Jack.
Just a question on the tax duplicates. The reports that came in, did we ever get a report for last one? I know we did not get one last month, but I just wanted to know that one this one.
It's here.
For the last one?
For this one.
I know for this one, for the last one. Okay. So we'll have to ask. Okay.
Any other questions on the motion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Horwath?
Yes.
Mrs. Adamitis?
Yes, abstaining on the tax collector report.
Mr. Chazery?
Yes.
Mr. Fietz?
Yes.
Don't you come asking?
Yes, except for I don't know on the tax collector's report.
Mrs. Macker?
Yes. May I have the next motion, please?
Madam President, I'll make a motion to pay the bills when entered into the computer and funds are available to renovate by June 2016 payroll.
Questions on the motion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Chazery?
Yes.
Mrs. Adamitis?
Abstaining.
Mr. Horwath?
Yes.
Except on the payroll.
Yes.
Mr. Fietz?
Abstaining on the bills, yes, on payroll.
Yes.
Mrs. Macker?
Yes. May I have the next motion, please?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve contract for animal arrest for 2016.
Second.
Questions on the motion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Kowalski?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Adamitis?
Yes.
Mr. Chazery?
Yes.
Mr. Horwath?
Yes.
Mr. Fietz?
Yes.
Mrs. Macker?
Yes. May I have the next motion, please?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Dempsey contract for DPW clothing and floor mats upon negotiation of terms by borough manager and borough solicitor. Second.
Questions on the motion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Kowalski?
Yes.
Mrs. Adamitis?
Yes.
Mr. Chazery?
Yes.
Mr. Horwath?
Yes.
Mr. Fietz?
Yes.
Mrs. Macker?
Yes. May I have the next motion, please?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to accept the low bidder for a rear garage renovation from D&amp;M in the amount of three hundred and forty-eight thousand, sixty-three dollars.
Second.
Questions on the motion?
Yes, I just want to be sure that this does not include the alternates, that was just the base bid, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Chazery?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mrs. Adamitis?
Yes.
Mr. Horwath?
Yes.
Mr. Fietz?
Yes.
Mr. Kowalski?
Yes.
Mrs. Macker?
Yes. May I have the next motion, please?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve agreement, the agreement with Teamsters Local Union regarding past landscaping work. Second.
Questions on the motion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Chazery?
Yes.
Mrs. Adamitis?
Yes.
Mr. Horwath?
Yes.
Mr. Fietz?
Yes.
Mr. Kowalski?
Yes.
Mrs. Macker?
Yes. Kevin Cocklin, would you see the afternoon so we can both sign this and get it forward to Kevin?
Good point.
May I have the next motion, please?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the second payment EBI for Civic Center Parked Project in the amount of eighty-seven thousand, three hundred and forty-nine dollars and fifty cents.
Second.
Questions on the motion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Kowalski?
Yes.
Mr. Horwath?
Yes.
Mrs. Adamitis?
Yes.
Mr. Chazery?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Fietz?
Yes.
Mrs. Macker?
Yes. May I have the next motion, please?
Madam President, I'd like to approve compensation for court time to Jim Brayer for twenty-five dollars per court appearance.
Second.
Questions on the motion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Horwath?
Yes.
Mr. Kowalski?
Yes.
Mrs. Adamitis?
Yes.
Mr. Chazery?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Fietz?
Yes.
Mrs. Macker?
Yes. I see we have voice code two twenty-one in attendance. Could you come forward, please? Here. Could you do the eyes? And honor our needs wonderfully, gentlemen?
On behalf of Dixie City Borough, we'd like to award District fifty-two twenty-one for your hard work at the DFW Park and only done in a couple of years in a row already. Thank you very much.
Thank you, boys. Good job. Okay, no good communications. Go with council, anything tonight, Jack?
Yeah, I just want to bring up one thing, Ted. I know I spoke to you about the tree, about Walker Street, the cleaning of the overgrowth of the trees and so forth. They've been starting, starting on that. And I'll talk to John and I have to go to the mayor and do the rest of it. Thank you.
Anything else, Jack? George, anything?
Yes, I would love to make, ask a question of the mayor and make a comment. Mayor made some comments at the meeting with regard to my looking at the resumes of the applicants for the police chief job. And I just thought that I had an email from our president indicating that they were available for any of us to look at.
Certainly.
So I don't know why I got called on the card if you're doing so.
No, I just said that I was asked if I had interviewed any of these people and I said no. And I said I never even looked at these. I said the only people that asked to look at them was Paul and yourself. That's why, that's why I mentioned because I didn't even look at them at all. I just sent them right up. That's why I'm saying who looked at them, you could, that's the only person.
But what if not? I mean, I thought I was doing my job by looking at those resumes, looking through them actually. There's some very good resumes there, you know.
Or we spent a lot of the people that do what they were looking at. That's why we didn't really look at them much at all.
Okay. You know, I just felt that I shouldn't have called on the card if it was something I just told. You know, it might have been.
Called the card, I just mentioned that you were the only people that looked at.
Well, the other thing I have a problem with, too, is apparently you timed me on how long I took it. You said we were there for twenty minutes. I was there a lot longer, by the way. But then you tell me. I'm trying to find out, I'm trying to find out, is it alternate to me that somebody is there?
About it, yeah?
Yes, I do. I don't keep track of anyone's time. Why do you keep track of mine?
Because the motion, I just said that in the venue, how long you were looking.
Well, I was there a lot longer because I read, I read those resumes.
Yeah?
Yes. Not all of them. There were some that were better than others, but yeah.
Anything else, sir? Jack?
No. Nothing to say?
Where?
Uh, no.
Paul?
No.
Bob?
Yes. Madam President, going back to an issue, I had a question by residents. Some of you may know, we changed our resolution on the collection of fees for duplicate tax services. And I was approached by a resident who was charged eleven dollars for a school duplicate tax. The tax collector and I did talk about it one night in meeting. And I'm just trying to get this issue put to bed on whether they are allowed to charge the eleven dollars for a school duplicate tax. And who is charged to it? The tax collector and I, in a minute it says Tony, but I would call Mr. Adamitis, on March eighth stated that he just does not charge residents only banks, mortgage companies, et cetera, that fee for their duplicate on their school tax. But at a school board meeting, which is online, it's from April twentieth, a resident spoke to the school board and asked why she was charged that fee. Attorney Dolan stated, records were inspected back to 2001 and he was unable to find a resolution or motion authorizing the charge. Attorney Dolan recommended the resident contact the tax office requesting documentation indicating the authority to collect the duplicate tax fee. So there was a letter sent with which I received a copy out to Attorney Dolan and it reads, Attorney Dolan Law Offices, and it was dated on May nineteenth, 2016. Mr. Adamitis, Dixon City Borough Building, nine oh one Enterprise Street, says, Dear Mr. Adamitis, it has been brought to the attention of the district's Board of Education. The local tax collectors may be imposing a fee in connection with the issuance of tax duplicates and/or copies of tax books. As you are aware, district by way of duly adopted resolution set the rate of compensation for tax collectors. That resolution does not authorize nor provide for the imposition of additional compensation or fees for the services of issuing duplicate copies or tax certifications with regard to any tax bill or matter pertaining to the school district. So the question I get from our president is, why do they have to pay eleven dollars? And where does it go? Because we have no ordinance in our books. I have a letter from our borough manager on that. It says the borough has no authority to regulate fees or compensation methods for the Mid Valley School District. The ordinance adopted by the municipality only refers to the borough real estate tax certificate copies. So if we were charging for this school duplicate fees all those years, who paid for it? And that's my question. And if there is no ordinance, should these people be entitled to their money back?
That's a legal question. I can't answer that, Bill.
Well, the borough has an ordinance which only deals with, obviously, the borough's records and their certifications, actually for certification of any taxes, whether they're paid or unpaid for the borough. The Allen decision, which was why this all came up in 2006 originally, but it came up in that particular case, helped with both the school district and the borough. The borough can only, we can only have certifications with regard to our taxation. We don't have anything to do with the school district and what they charge and whether they have adopted that by any ordinances or resolutions. That's a never fails trick. So we could not deal with what they charge and what they authorize to charge. Ours only deals with the borough. It was ten dollars for the borough certification of the borough tax. We most recently also added a dollar for reimbursement of our particular cost. That's it. It's just the borough. So I don't believe I, my manager, can correct me. We don't collect anything for the school district, do we?
Ted, not that I'm aware of.
Mr. Jones, the ordinance that you passed.
Yes.
As I recall, it says all duplicates?
It only deals with borough duplicate tax.
Does it say all duplicates collected by the?
I don't have that in front of me, but.
Well, that's what it says.
It only deals with a borough tax. We have no jurisdiction. Let's just assume the county also has a certification for taxes and that deals with even a borough tax that would be turned over to them that were outstanding. And they pass their own fees with regard to their certification for a particular tax. We only deal with borough taxes. We do not have jurisdiction or we ever had jurisdiction for that whatsoever. And that came out of the original Allen decision. I don't know if you were here calling in two thousand.
Two thousand and six.
In two thousand and six.
Yeah.
And that's what it came out?
I'm aware of that, Bill, but I'm just saying the way that the ordinance that you passed was set up, said all duplicates.
Well, my thinking would be.
They only deal with what we have jurisdiction of.
If it's a borough ordinance, it's implied that it only applies to a borough tax. I mean, you could take that to mean a tax in lately, I mean, if we're reading it that way, but.
We have no authority by any decisions that are made for the school district. But I have another question now that you bring this up. And my question happens to be, if those duplicates were collected all that time, were they intermingled with borough funds? And if so, should we have audit them?
Well, you do have an audit done.
Well, it's done as part of the audit of the general fund. But should we have an audit done of the tax fund itself?
See, it is.
Separately.
Tax collection does get out of there. He does get out.
Separately.
He does get out and out in separately.
What, Ray?
Well, you just pay, you just have the audit or time for you really do it.
It's not complete.
What?
It's not complete yet. He's not finished with the audit yet.
He's.
And the audit, and the audit that's done.
He's not finished with the audit, he doesn't start from the largest first.
The audit that's done is not done, is not done for duplicates because we had no idea that we were, we had no money coming into the borough, correct? We had no money coming into the borough until this year when that ordinance was passed, am I correct?
I have no idea. You passed the ordinance, don't explain it to me.
That's correct.
Explain it to the court system.
The money did not come to the borough prior to the ordinance and now it's only one dollar per duplicate coming to the borough.
Yeah, so everybody's aware of it, in 2007, the borough had an ordinance, the borough did not get any of the funds. They were not remitted to the borough. So an audit of borough funds would just show that no funds were remitted to the borough under the 2007 ordinance. Nothing came into the general fund.
Well, Madam President, I'm at it. If we've been charging for school duplicates all these years, even before this ordinance, at whose expense?
Well, we have been, the tax collector's office.
Right, well, do they use borough resources, stamps, envelopes?
Yeah.
That's a good point.
I don't have the answer. That plus we're gonna have to ask the tax collector. Wouldn't it have been a good idea to sit down with the tax collector at the very beginning before this last ordinance was passed? Nobody, I mean, you just might enact an ordinance and you never talked to the tax collector.
Well, the ordinance was enacted so we could, we could collect some money for the resources that are being used, copies that are being posted, envelopes, et cetera. I don't think enacting an ordinance needs to be run by the tax collector. I'm sorry, I don't think that, no, because it actually doesn't involve them. That actually involves only the borough. That involves only the resources of our borough. That does not involve them. That one dollar that's collected is not involved.
The tax collector still keeps his ten dollars, making a copy.
Yeah, it'll go to the borough. You know, if you let it go to the borough and then he's reimbursed.
Ten.
So the borough keeps one dollar. That's what I'm saying back in two thousand and six or seven, whatever year. It's an issue.
That's all. Something to look into there.
Thanks.
Mr. Mayor, any view at this time? Okay. Audience aside, anyone have anything? Yes, John?
I'd like to go back to the Jim, that you approved animal arrest contract in 2016.
Yes.
Is this something new?
No, we do animal arrests every year.
Okay, now, is that a lengthy contract? Many pages you have to read?
No. It just gives the theme.
Is it open for the public? Do we get copies?
Absolutely. Absolutely. You can just reach out and have to order. Yeah, you can have my copy.
Seriously. No, not. Get after me.
Yeah, it's only one page. It's just the theme for the service we provide to our residents.
Okay, is there any outstanding complaints about any type of animals?
None at this time that I've heard.
You just have the one with the cats.
Yeah.
Are there vines involved?
Vines? No.
Okay, thank you. I'll get after the next question.
Okay, anyone else?
Um, yes, yes. Oh, I'm sorry. Michelle. Hi. Don't worry, why don't you come on? I'm ready. One second, okay? Michelle has a report for us.
Borough Council, how are you doing?
Good.
Hi, Michelle. Okay. In tonight's packet is information regarding a first responder training on natural gas. That will be held in September up at our nine o'clock center. All the information is on the sheet as far as registering, if there's any fee and so forth. Also, it's beautiful outside. We still have two more family fun days. The next one will be taking place this Saturday from eleven till two at Yales Word. And we also still have two arts and a park the next, two following Tuesdays, and they will be at McDade and Yales Word respectively. Also, information regarding the prescription drug takeback program. We have prescription takeback containers at four locations throughout the county. One at the local county courthouse, the Moscow Borough Building, the city of Cardville Police Station, as well as Southern Addington. If any citizens in the city would like to put a drug collection container in the borough building, you can contact the local special hand and drug program. And I have Michelle Smith's information on that. The only thing that, it is anonymous. You can put them in a baggie and toss it in. The only thing that they don't take is needles, nothing drugable. Also, I know it's short notice, but this came across my desk today. It's a program called Finding the Funding. And it's a grant writing workshop that will take place tomorrow at five thirty at the Trolley Museum. And that's all that I have for right now. Is there any questions, I mean? Five thirty tomorrow? Five thirty tomorrow at the Trolley Museum. There's animal parking there. Thank you. Thank you for your presentation, dear.
Yes, ma'am, we had your hand raised. We've had this problem a lot. I wanted to do it myself, and Mr. Kowalski can tell you I could do it. The speeding on Morgan Street.
Can you give your name?
It's Laura Chaput. C-H-A-P-U-T. The speeding on Morgan Street is horrible. I mean, residents, I mean, they're flying.
Mr. Resatar, is there something you can address?
I'll see you after the meeting. I'll get specific time and dates and send you all some data to do that situation.
Okay. Anyone else on the side? Yes, Dr. Cusack. All right. Just here to address the ordinance that you passed at your last meeting. Microphone, please.
Oh, yes, microphone, please.
With the green button.
It's on, I believe it is. It's on close.
Okay, it's, all right. No, it's on. Is that good? Yeah, that's good. Nice to meet you all. Thank you for having me. I do have a few questions, though, on the ordinance for. Anyone's number is Lauren Cummings, County Commissioner. All right. Ordinance Borough Council unanimously adopted to extend civil rights protections based on sexual orientation, gender, and expression for employment and housing accommodations, making Dixon City the first community since Scranton in 2003 to offer broad protections to the groups. I just have a few questions on that. Was it advertised that this was going to be a part of your agenda for that meeting? Yes. Okay, was that advertised? Any experience? We advertise any ordinance as it's required by law. Okay. Were you experiencing a high amount of problems in that area with businesses and discrimination? Is that what happened? Am I not sure? Not that was, to my knowledge, but there was concern expressed by our residents of the potential. And we'd rather be proactive than reactive to any type of situation like that. Okay. I don't have a problem with the first part of that, with employment and housing. My count comes in, in public accommodations. So I'm just wondering, did you speak to the businesses up at the mall or Six to see, like, how will this change for dressing rooms, bathrooms? What are the implications of one of the stipulations that you require in order to maintain this ordinance for them? And also, what are punishments if they don't comply?
We are, in fact, we were going to meet this week. We have a hearing scheduled. We're actually going to do revisions. You'll see that there's, even though we have the adoption date on that, we do have other ones dealing with certain, we went over that evening, certain due process concerns with regard to it. But they will have to, there's also jurisdiction, both for our commission and for the commission in Harrisburg. But if you elect one over the other, that's where it stays. There are certain penalties. I don't have the ordinance in front of me, but there are, there is a penalty section with regard to it. One of the areas may deal with the awarding of certain fees or and/or damages, which the state wants to have some input on that. We have the time period to deal with it. So there are sanctions with regard to it. I don't have it in front of me, but our band can send that down to the county or give it to you personally, whatever you'd like, this coming with regard to it. But will it affect businesses if they'll have to make accommodations? If there are complaints with regard to it, they may go through the commission itself. But the, whatever definitional sections are in there, they'll have to comply with it.
Right. Well, I would have appreciated if that commission took place prior to the ordinance, but it's, you know, you first prefer the hard kind of thing. So I guess what I would ask is if you consider taking the public accommodations out of the ordinance, have the commission, and then get the input from your local businesses to see how that might affect them, and decide after that whether you want to put that back on to the ordinance itself, depending on the feedback you got from the local business communities. You know, I know churches are exempt from that, correct? Am I understanding?
Yeah.
Okay. But it would be your local businesses. So, I mean, my concern would be the public in regards to dressing rooms and shower rooms. You know, places like a gym, for instance. Is that gym going to have to have their shower rooms, just like a public school would have to, unisex? Or are they not? And if not, then how are we addressing that certain situation? How do you know if someone's just for the first time pretending to say they are what this claim may be, and actually they're not? Who's liable if someone claims to be a transgender, uses a shower room, attacks a woman? Who's liable for that women at this point? Because now, the bathroom law, as you all know, would be completely wiped out and this supersedes it. So no longer do we have protection in a bathroom in that regards, because if they claim to be a transgender, they attack someone or, and they deny it, then what happens? Is it he says, she said? So that's something that I would be concerned with. Dressing rooms and showers, that's what I'm looking at. So I really would appreciate if you could consider those and let the public know the impact of that. And is there a time limit on the changes that the businesses and even municipalities, because obviously you're going to have to make changes here as well in this building? How long do they have to make those changes since this ordinance was already passed?
The effective date is in January, I think it's January tenth, two thousand seventeen.
So they have until January of next year to make all the changes that are required. So they'll have to add that into their budget for this year. So that's affecting their finances at this point, too. School districts, will they have to, and daycares and, will they all have to be changed as well to accommodate the struggles?
That would be for any investigative reports and determinations by the commission.
Well, I can't believe it would be exempt, so...
I wouldn't either, because I do believe that, and I'm going to take a look at it, I think the federal government has actually issued guidelines on that. So the federal government, and I believe President Obama issued something to that effect up to...
That's only for federal public buildings, because they can't get it through Congress and the Senate, so it's only for federal buildings, so...
I think it goes to federal financing and that would deal with your school just because. Unless, I guess if you had a, if you had something that wasn't funded at all, I'm not aware of any in Dixon City that respect us. So you're asking a broader question beyond what are, what we deal with. Here, we have public schools and...
Right.
I could be wrong, but I do think that they receive federal funding.
I believe they do not.
They don't?
I think they do. I think you're correct, because they would threaten to pull that if they didn't follow the guidelines. Some people chose not to accept it, didn't take the federal, it's for the lunch program, that's what they get federal dollars for. So if they don't follow that mandate, as the executive order was written, then they won't get the lunch money, which a lot of states have opted out of that and will not accept the budget. So I'm just, I'm just concerned with the other implications and how it affects businesses. When is community's warrant, is there, like, is he going to sit on this commission, or is that legal point?
We have many of the...
Well, if you could possibly let or have some type of meeting to let businesses know what exactly this impact's going to have on their school districts, municipalities, the shops up at the mall, down on Route Six, how that, they'll have to change their, their dressing rooms or not, how it's going to impact them. Local gyms in the area for their shower rooms and bathrooms? If they're going to have to mangle the shower rooms? I know that we do have some, I do have some that I pulled up with some safeguards, but they have to actually prove that beyond a shadow of a doubt that they are transgender in this specific restroom access transgender employees provide business. You know, I have some of these suggestions, install flaps on the outer, install doors to cover the gap between door and stall wall, extend stall doors and walls from the floor to ceiling, extend private dividers during urinals further up in the wall into higher levels. Locker rooms, use a private area within the public area such as a shower stall with a door or an area separated by a curtain, a separate changing schedule in the public area. So I don't know how they did that, though, changing schedule. And then use of a nearby private area such as a restroom, but that would no longer be legal. So there's many, many implications that are going to happen from this ordinance that a lot of people are going to have to comply with. That's why I'm asking if you could, I don't mind an ordinance that says you cannot fire someone because of this, because that's ridiculous. I can't imagine anybody firing someone because of sexual orientation. So yes, keep that. But I would ask that you just either remove that one section until this commission is done, to let the businesses know how it's going to impact them and the community as well. Thank you.
If you wouldn't like, is the county also looking at these particular issues?
Not that I'm in the room. I am, because obviously I'm concerned with the whole entire county, so if we pass an ordinance...
Well, other than public accommodation, are they looking at adopting these policies? I know you expressed your personal belief that transgender persons should not be discriminated with employment.
Or housing.
Or housing. Is, is the county...
Or any reason.
Are you going to implement your personal belief in that area or suggest a policy to be adopted by the county?
That's not... I believe it was approached to the county, and the county, it was approached at a meeting of course.
No, no, my, my question was, is if that's the commissioner's personal belief that that should be, that's what she believes is fair and reasonable, whether that was going to be lifted or not.
No, no, this is just something that I'm asking this, this council to consider, because of the implications of all the changes that would have to occur.
No, I meant the ones that you didn't have an issue with regarding to...
I haven't put all attention on presenting anything to that side. Thank you very much. Anyone else on this side of the audience? Yes, Diane.
Hi, I'd just like to make an announcement. Our neighborhood watch is having a meeting next Wednesday in this room at seven P.M. And we're having two school board members speak on the taxes. So for all property owners with the increase, a large increase in taxes again this year, people from Oliphant, True, and Dixon City, please attend, okay? Show your interest. Thank you. Thanks, Diane. Anyone else on this side? Okay, we'll go to this side of the audience. Um, in the back?
No, my name is Jack Bannick from eight fifty-one Carmel Street. I have an issue. I think we should check out fireworks. I think fireworks in town are getting out of line. I think there's too much commercial fireworks being set off in older residential areas. Eight hundred, nine hundred, ten hundred blocks of Carmel Street. Unbelievable. That's what I have to say. So I think we should, I don't know what these fireworks places are selling in town. I know there's a new one up on Route Six there at McDonald's. I don't know what they were selling. We're looking at this big, heavy commercial stuff. This, these fireworks are what they use at the Dixon City days. Big, heavy aerial stuff. It's going up right out in our area, close to cars. All the debris is coming down on all people's roofs. I could see little rockets, Roman cannons, you know, using the fireworks, but there's a tire. We have to check it out. Something's going to happen in the community, and I hope the borough is not going to be responsible for it, that they know this is going on.
Mr. Resatar, can you make our officers conscious of this on their patrols and maybe check into the types and legality of these types of fireworks?
I certainly will.
Thank you.
In addition to that, we did, our officers did go up to these temporary fireworks, as we call them tents, around the certain areas. We worked in conjunction with the fire chief. The ordinance, well, not the ordinance, the state law for the fireworks is very ambiguous. So we responded to the calls that we received to the communication center, but we did address some of those issues. And as you know, July, July fifth, they're gone. So we will certainly, you'll keep responding to that, but we will... My point is I wouldn't like to be a Dixon City police officer around the Fourth of July, because it's just overwhelming. There's probably a lot of calls that should go in that don't. You know, we figure we're going to get through it. But in the event, some kid gets hurt in the neighborhood, or some of this heavy stuff falls in someone's house, burn a tree, get the tree on fire, and gets the house on fire, is the borough going to be responsible? I think there should be some kind of a warning, maybe a few months before the Fourth of July, that the borough might not check the ordinances and find out. I don't think we should have to put up with all this heavy stuff that's going on, really. There has to be, there has to be a limit on what's being set off.
If you look in the piece of this month, in the back of the book, there's actually a question about that, about fireworks, about someone asking about, just like he's asking. And basically, it says that that is controlled by the state. And then if somebody wants to put on public display, they would need a license. But the SPAR is all the other fireworks, like you're saying, that it's a, that's not controlled by us. It's controlled by state law.
I don't know what is being sold in these tents. I don't know where it's coming from. But I'm just stating the fact, this is heavy commercial stuff that's going up in the community. It's just not small bottle rockets. I missed the community forty-five years, forty-seven years. But I really think it's getting out of hand, you know what I mean? Maybe we have to determine what size, if they're selling these big orders or this big blast one that leaves the ground, the stuff that we sell in Dixon City days, they're not professionals. They're about young kids, they're young men who are doing this, and if their kids get hurt, I don't want to see it happen. I just think it's getting out of hand, and we should maybe put out some kind of warning that if you're caught. Anyway, we should set some examples. But it's, I don't, I don't know. I know we have a new police chief, but I don't know where he lives. But if you were in Dixon City that night, maybe the third or the fourth, there's a lot of heavy stuff going on, believe me. Someone's going to get hurt. Maybe we have to set an example, you know, get a warning out there that, and people should follow it in if they're disturbed, you know? I have small stuff, we're a lot younger, but nothing like this.
Okay, Jack, thank you. Mike said he will, they will be more conscious of it, and they'll make sure the laws are enforced, start checking on things.
Right, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on this side? Yes, ma'am.
Yes, Rose Stupinski from Miles Avenue. Myself and other residents of the council since two thousand nine, asking for something to be done about the parking issue caused directly by Revolutionary Health Care. There was a meeting in two thousand ten where the woman who owned it stated she had six cars and other parking, parking agreements with neighboring places. She either wasn't truthful or she doesn't use those agreements, because she wasn't asked to verify it, and there was never cars parked over there. It's gotten worse. I've corresponded directly with you, Barbara. I've spoken with the mayor on the phone, and nothing, nothing, nothing happens. It's beyond unbearable. I'd like to show some photos from two weeks ago, and one, another set from this week. I counted twenty-one Revolutionary cars on a single day, parked all of them down the street. There was not a single parking space. The following day, I had people over at the funeral service, they had to park a block and a half away from my home, because Revolutionary Health Care took over the neighborhood. It's dangerous, it's intrusive, and nobody seems to care. And we would like something to be done about it.
Well, you know, we have done a traffic study several years ago when this situation came up. And at that time, the traffic study that Chief Balinski presented, it didn't hit the threshold for permit parking. And we did do a survey of the residents. We, I, you probably got that all.
That was in two thousand twelve. It was in two thousand sixteen.
Yeah, I know, that's what I'm saying. But I'm saying, maybe it's time we repeat.
I challenge anyone in this entire room to look at those photos and say there's not an issue that needs to be addressed.
That's what I'm saying. I think maybe it's time we repeat our, our way we pursue this before.
We can't even pull into our driveways.
Yeah, okay. So Mike, can you, can you get together with the officers and talk to Will about the traffic study that was done with the parking situation up there, and come back with a report to council? So we can move forward if need be on this, okay? It sounds like, and I, and you're right, I do recall that they did make arrangements, wasn't it with CBS or ManSec?
I drive by there every single morning.
With Scandale, where that, where that little, where they sell the beer dolly now?
Oh.
Photos showing the empty parking lot.
Oh, I see. That's where it was.
The one document is this past week, one photo per day, including showing the empty parking lots. On Saturday and Sunday, the street is fine. It's only during the week when, they start at six thirty in the morning, they, they block our driveways. The DPDW people don't even like to collect garbage on our street, because they can't find our garbage cans.
Well, we certainly, we certainly want to address that. You shouldn't be inconveniencing us there. Could you forward all those pictures to Mike when we're done looking at them then? And...
We also did call, one of the neighbors called the police.
And did they come up?
Of course, they came.
Yes.
And they basically said, what do you want us to do? They're illegally parked. And I said, well, the two which are in that picture are illegally parked right to the corner. And he basically was like, all right, I'll ticket them. And I believe what he did was just tell them to move their cars. I called the police, I called the police on a Friday, and watched the car sit there all weekend and not get ticketed. So I don't know what else I can do. Our neighborhood is, is ruined by this. It's a beautiful street. Anybody who knows it knows that, and it's ruined. Our property value is, imagine trying to sell a house when these cars are lined all up and down both sides of the street. A two-way street where only one car can barely come up.
Can you, can you just, before you leave, could you give Mike Resatar your name and phone number, so that he can be in touch with you and work on this review of the situation there? I'm going to have his two...
People who work at Revolutionary, do they drive a separate car and then pick up their car?
Many of them do, yeah.
So they leave their car there?
So the employee cars do, too. They also have a school, and the students park on our street.
I see, okay.
Chaz, can I, or Tony Jones, could we call the owner of this company, too? Like, maybe they don't get it, that they're creating a problem.
They get it, they get it. I actually drove, I was on my way to work.
Right.
There was a Revolutionary car parked right in the no parking zone. I rolled down my window, she was getting out of her car, and I said, that is a no parking sign. And she just went...
Mr. Davis has been going on since two thousand and nine. Mr. Damski was informed of this in October of two thousand and eight. Nothing was done until the residents, like they are here, came in front of council. I have emails going back from two thousand and nine, from Mrs. Mecca, Mr. Jones. Revolutionary has been given every consideration, this parking contract they supposedly had, when they went in front of zoning, they weren't asked to present any documentation of this contract. They were just taken at the word, no contract ever existed. Bottom line. They have the police. Why, how many tickets have been written since two thousand and nine to the present? I'd like to know that, because just last month after this meeting, I approached Chief Balinski after the meeting, introduced myself, asked him, please, if the officers are driving by, I don't expect them to make special calls. You're patrolling, you see the illegally parked cars, can you please ticket them? He said to me, we have gone in and asked them to move the cars. I said, why aren't they being ticketed? And he didn't answer me. Why are these cars not being ticketed? I was told by a former councilman that Chief Balinski had stated that the police don't want to keep ticketing these, these cars, because they can get a harassment suit. If that's the case, illegal is illegal. I don't care if it's a hundred times a day or once a year, it's illegal. There's no harassment if you're doing something illegal. So why isn't this being, why is our property value down now? Why is there two-hour parking on Sunset? Where was the survey, the street survey done for Sunset and Hillcrest by the church? Why do we have to have a survey done on Miles when two-hour parking is...
I don't know the circumstances of the parking location, Hillcrest and Sunset.
Two-hour parking by Skippies, an hour parking by the church on Hillcrest, but we can't get two-hour parking or resident parking only?
Good by the business, right? I think by the business is better.
Yes, but there's, their business is there.
That's what, there is.
All right, well, you can hear, and Mike, you'll follow up with that, right? And keep in touch with the nurses, and you get Diane's name and phone number, all stolen roses, and, and let's, let's stay in touch with us, and you report back to us.
But it's also come to our attention that they're keeping, because they're animal lover, cat lovers, which I love animals, I have a dog, but they're keeping terminally, terminally ill cats in the building and taking care of them. There are some, I think Rose has a copy of it from two thousand and fourteen, of comments online of people who worked for them, stating how the smell of the Oliphant building, because I think they'll buy the Oliphant address, because the one eight four four seven number or zip code. And they're lucky that the Department of Health hasn't been called, which I'm about to call them. Because let's think about this. If any of you in here have a home health nurse coming to your house, and that, hey, your mother, your father, your sister is severely allergic to cats, and that nurse goes into that building to get their daily or their weekly work assignment, they go into that home health to take care of that patient, the patient has a severe reaction, what doctor or nurse is going to think it's from an allergic reaction? what doctor or nurse is going to think it's from an allergic reaction? That patient will be treated for something completely different.
Is there any recourse on that, please?
Yes, if the state licenses them, a report probably could be made to the state if they have...
That's really problematic.
Other than that, two of them, I just think they need to...
And in two thousand and ten, Mr. Damski told me that you have to have six parking lots per two thousand square feet, which they do. Since then, they have used their third floor as office space. They have poured concrete in the basement, which I believe that was, I have emails going back and forth. I don't think any permit ever existed for that to be done. So, that bottom floor, the basement's being used, the first floor, the second floor, now the attic. So, how many more parking spaces do they legally spoke to have? Because they're not, they can't do it, they have no room for that.
Did they do any expansion that you're aware of?
Not to my knowledge. I think when we had that thing, we went over the square footage. You need one, one parking spot for every three hundred square. I think we went over that during that hearing with the zoning hearing board.
Got a copy of that, is there?
I still have copies of that, too.
Ches, can you make a good point for this gathering this information to deal with the situation? Stanley and Bill and Jimmy, so that we can maybe, you know, have one person keeping in touch with Rose and Diane and the residents and keeping, making sure that we're making progress and not standing still on this issue when we're actually doing something, because I don't hear too much. So, we definitely need to check to have this parking situation looked at again and start citing the illegal parking. And we need to check, find out how we can see what type of square footage they're using in the building now as opposed to the original application, okay?
I have another question. You have an ordinance on the books from nineteen eighty-nine establishing fire lanes at commercial buildings. Where are the fire lanes for this building? Can a fire truck even get up our street if we have a fire? I don't think so at this point, because of the way, you can't, it's a two-way street. Two-way traffic isn't viable at this point.
Mike, can you work with, don't you want to come out and check that situation out also?
It's ordinance zero-six-one-four-eight-nine-zero-two.
What was that? Okay, thank you. So, we'll get together and take care of that also. Anything else? Yes.
Hi, Jeanie Prora. Hi. I brought this up last year around this time about the runoff behind in Fairway Estates. It's absolutely disgusting. It is not a runoff anymore, it's nothing but a dirty swamp. It stinks. There is so much garbage down there. I had called a couple times, commented about the fence, the fence was falling down. In our rules for the development, trees can only be so high. When the wind blows, the trees that are on the other side of the fence are blowing onto my property, like they're breaking and blowing onto my property. Now, I've cut all my trees down. I don't know what else I can do. Now, somebody evidently came and tapped up the fence and closed the gate. I'm waiting until one day a child gets down in there and they're lost. It's absolutely disgusting down there. I can't sit on my patio.
Where is this actually, in Fairway?
Fairway, it's, I'm on the cul-de-sac, it's on Birdie Lane. This gentleman has been there before.
I know her.
Mayor, mayor was there. It's disgusting.
What, what are you, are you talking about the retention pond down the line?
It's the retention pond.
Is that what she's talking about?
Yes.
Between Palmer, Palmer, uh...
It's right at the bottom.
What do you want?
Birdie.
Bird, down the bottom, down in that hole. It's fenced around, it's a retaining pond.
But it's not even really, it's not a secure fence.
When that water, excuse me, when that water comes up into that pond, it goes across the main street, it goes under, actually, under the main street there's a little creek that comes out, but where that Russian church is on Main Street. That's where the water actually is supposed to go, eventually to get to the river.
But that water doesn't get down there. I know that it was cleaned out at one point, but the mosquitoes, I don't know if the Department of Environmental Protection should be there. There's so many children down there. My next-door neighbor was pregnant. She said, Jean, this scares me.
Well, there has to be something in the developer's agreement, whether they maintain that pond, right?
But who does that? Is it the boroughs?
There should be something in there, if that pond is retained, it's going to be maintained by the homeowners or by us, by the owner. Yeah.
And I'm not sure if that's possible, the upper dedication, but it never made the upper dedication.
Yeah, because there was issues with that before.
So, that's still in the hands of the homeowners. So, that's, that's the responsibility of the developer, it's private property.
So, we can, can...
We had notified, just as she was indicating, I did not, we looked at it. I asked that the discharge go away, I believe that this part of the way has trees and floating junk around it. It doesn't allow the discharge until it gets up to the second ring instead of the discharge through the first ring. And that keeps the water a little deeper than what it was intended to. The fence and the issue stated the gate, the gate is never locked. We've, every time we've been there, we've been, we called the owner's attorney and made aware of it. After I visited, I moved on two occasions.
And did they lock it after you contacted?
That may have been when it was cleaned up a little bit from what...
Well, they did, they took a bow or something and cleaned it out.
But it's, it's a forgotten land, it really is.
Do you think another call to Paul's attorney would be worth it?
We can call there tomorrow.
I mean, why do our trees have to be cut, yet his don't?
But it's, it's never going to fully be water.
Right. Well, that's the whole purpose of it, is to control the water and have it dissipate gradually. All right, Gary Welling will contact Paul's attorney, and he said he got some results when he did that with me before. Maybe, I don't know, what the answer is, to keep on and maintain that.
Yes, I think the pond has long since gone up.
I think so.
Some lines that also, but he can, he has done other repair works, so he can give a little call over the map.
Okay, we'll try to follow up with him, okay? Gary, let Ches know how you make out, and you would just call the Borough Office and talk to the borough manager for an update, maybe in a week, okay? All right. Anyone else on this side of the audience? Well, sorry, Brian.
I know, Chris is coming, wants to talk to us, so if you want to go over.
No, Chairman, just so you know, Jerry Stiles from Conservation District will help you as well, and they do look at those issues quite frequently. If you please call them.
Who's that?
Jerry Stiles from Conservation District.
I mean, there's woodchucks all over now.
Anybody else that if you have issues?
Is that what you want to try? Oh, you have more? Okay, okay.
Brian, I see this is the second payment. Maybe I wasn't at the meeting. How much is this going to cost?
What are you talking about?
For the, I'm sorry, for the citizen.
It's a hundred and fifty thousand dollar we have ahead. This is the second, this is payment number two. I correctly did one last one, we didn't do one more.
So, the grandfather's. My other question is, does the police chief have the right to write citations?
Are you talking about Mike Resatar, or are you talking about...
Just asking if the police, if the police chief for this town has the right to write citations.
With regard to labor matters, we don't comment generally on that, but our police chief has traditionally written citations.
So, it would be yes?
Yes, it's a fast practice they have to mine.
I've been here long enough. I know Billy Staninski did. I know Will did. Could this chief right now write?
No, no, he cannot.
And why is it?
Because we're writing this, won't have certification.
Okay, so... So, what is his job right now?